It's not seeing you.
Can you see us, Caitlin? You can? Okay.
That's probably so.
It's okay. The second mission house.
Mission.
Mission. Okay.
Do I have it saved first?
Yes, I do. I think it's in that.
We're gonna have to.
Okay.
Welcome. All right. It's present. I will call the number sixteen twenty twenty five town of Lions Urban Renewal Authority meeting to order. Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Chair Rogan present, Commissioner Hammerick.
Present.
Commissioner Lowell.
Present.
Commissioner Dottie. Commissioner Paula Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Browning.
Present.
Commissioner Lee Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Pope.
Present.
Commissioner Dreystad.
Present.
Commissioner Weiss.
Present.
And Commissioner Loachman.
Present.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the live job of the agents.
My job is to define our agreement and the experience of America. And to do what we're doing for which is to answer. Why did I send under God any universal life labor to you and justice for all?
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second?
Sorry.
Any modifications to the agenda? Who called for the vote? You can just.
And I should waste. Sorry, the question I heard the the motion request for approval of the agenda, but are we going to go through approvals of the items that were sent? I'm in particular interested in the minutes from last month's meeting.
Yeah, that's on the consent agenda, which is the next item. Yep.
I'm not in, I'm not into the document yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Did you, did you get a recording of the vote on approving the agenda?
Yes, it passes the members.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Would you please read the consent agenda?
Yes, item one are the September eighteenth twenty twenty five Laura meeting minutes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To move.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion?
There you go. Yeah, thank you. I am, and I'm still trying to get into the computer, so I apologize. My quick glance at these documents, it looked like I was in the present section of the September eighteenth meeting, and this is my first
meeting.
Lions Urban Renewal Authority, so I wasn't invited.
What I'm seeing is that it says you're absent in the minutes.
And I was never invited.
Oh.
So this is literally the first meeting I've been invited to for the Lions Urban Renewal Authority.
All of your applicant, all of your invitations were to go to Natalie Springit and Gustavo.
We've sent him for probably four or five months. Okay, so I wasn't aware of them, so I just wanted to.
Sure.
So, so maybe there's four other months of minutes where I was supposed to be invited, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
And if it's, it's that I was absent, but I also want to make sure the the board knows. I'm also part of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority that just shows up as Lura. So that could be part of the inclusion or staff. And for myself today for this meeting, quite frankly, so thank you, whatever we need to do to help clarify, that would be really great.
So that's confusing.
Yes.
Versa. And maybe, would it be helpful for us to get you previous minutes?
Yeah. That'd be fabulous.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for your time, everyone.
Any, anything else on the minutes?
I'll read its standards, but I wasn't here. I'm unable to determine if the minutes are accurate or not.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
I'll have to abstain as well.
Okay, two extensions.
Three.
Three extensions. Okay. All those who can vote on the consent agenda, we'll call for the vote.
Barney. And I cannot.
Your wife.
Your wife. Can't see her.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to our first item of general business, which is an update for Moss Rock Development. Welcome.
Thank you.
Please, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves to the folks.
Sure. Your line. Please.
Emma Johnson.
Anyas Fajero. Nice seeing everybody. So we are the sole managers of Moss Rock Development LLC. Just to start, because I don't know who has what background, I'm going to probably give a little background before I move forward with the area.
Right.
A few years ago, we acquired several lots in the middle of town and worked to line up all the elements we needed to build a hotel. And when I say the elements, it goes from the land, the water shares, the design, the tribute affiliation with Marriott, some pace pre-work. And then we lined up with other investors and part of the financial model. I spilled the detail of market research and pricing and volume. When they were interested, I'd be happy to share with them. I think it's meaningful today. And we thank you for the Lura Board. We secured TIF contract. It took us more time than we expected, if you remember, to go through this. And a bit of TIF, a bit of TIF. And you know, timing is everything. And when, just before we succeeded to finally solve everything, the interest rates started to go to the roof and the investors, specifically hospitality and construction investors, were got skittish. So everything was like, okay. So we told you before, we said, okay, we put this on ice and we wait until it's the right timing. So the numbers work. In between, so it was two years ago, in between, we continued to do certain things to prep for them. You've already noticed. We had to do a ton of asbestos cleaning and demo cleaning and due to feedback from the town, we worked to find a way to make the site look better than a dumb site. Sorry to say this was a dumb site when we were doing Broadway. I'm saying we, when you were doing Broadway with Colorado. So we made progress as much as we could while waiting for the market to start back. Took longer, as usual. The good news is first, we are committed to doing it. So I want to start there. We are committing to doing it and we've not given up. And the reason I'm starting there is because I've heard rumors. People calling me saying, I've heard this and I heard that, so let's be straight, direct. You see us face to face. We are committed to doing it. We've already put three million dollars in this project and we're committed to put more under certain terms. So that's why. So we're committed to do it. The lead investor that we were in discussion with two hundred change years ago is an investment firm specialized in hospitality and apartments in the Rockies. So they're, they understand our market and they really, they're based in Denver. They, the director manager went to see you. So we are in our, what I call our sweet spot. Okay? Someone who understands this region and this market. They've done this for twenty years. And we have, the last six weeks, I've met with them three times. So they are back in, in the game. The reason being banks have started to be more open to construction loans again, and they've not started to get rates down yet, but they're signaling. The investors are looking for mechanism to invest. So people have been freezing their cash and they want to invest in more projects. So the lead thinks that it's time to get back to looking at it. However, the market has changed from the hospitality market. So I'm going to get there. The lead investor is around the table. And we had a long discussion this Monday, but what is going to take to get them to sign? The reason it's important to get them, it's not only for the money they were raised, but the skill sets they have in hospitality bill. Okay, so we want, building a hotel is nice, getting a hotel to succeed is way better. So it sounds simple, but it's true. And so they also bring hotel management contracts. So they've got what it takes to not only build, but help us succeed in the transition to running a hotel that's profitable. The second thing, the second reason it's important to get them is because we already have another private investor lined up to follow them. For exactly the same reason, we know that if this guy signed, the project is valuable. So, so it's like a domino effect. And so, and so when I say we are willing to put more, it's for the same reason. So if we get what we need in this puzzle, after a discussion with them Monday, we are extremely confident. I will not give you a probability, it is just, just like, extremely confident that we can get the twelve million dollar of capital that we need. Some of it, because I gave you the update, so I can give you the update. I'm currently working to sell my own company, so it's going pretty well and it should be done this quarter. So some of it, timing once again, you know, between the interest, the investor, selling the company. So everything seems to finally getting where it's supposed to be. The feedback we got, please correct me by the way, the feedback we got one day was there are things that we need to change in the model. So they're like, you need to resecure the TIF. You need to, I forgot to tell you something. When we did the TIF at the time, if you remember, for those of you who were there, our IRR was just a big cusp of what hospitality investors look for. With interest rates going up, inflation and tariffs going up, we went down. So below the requested IRR. So the feedback from the investor was, okay, market data, we need updating market data, prices have gone up when it comes to the revenue side. So the good things are prices have been up.
Hotel fees.
Yeah.
That.
Yes, pricing of hotel rooms have been up in the last two years. Thank you.
Yeah.
By the way, if you don't understand my accent, please, I'd be happy to repeat slower. Or she will translate for me.
I'm pretty good at it, by the way.
So the IRR went down, but there are good things that had happened. Price per room has gone up. The, I never know if it's Sundance or Skydance.
Sunday.
Sundance. Sorry. The Sundance is going to provide a better stronger winter. So there are positive elements in terms of volume and price. On the cost side, unfortunately, you've all seen inflation and it's not only on building, but on salaries. So we also need to change some of the things on the model for running the hotel, which the so these are, so we are at the IRR, we are, we're going to need the TIF money and we're going to likely have to come back to the town to see there are all the things we can do. Okay, I'm not setting the wrong expectation here. Everything we can do to do it. What we because we've not, we're going to have to hire someone to do another survey. I do not have, so here I'm apologizing to you at the CFO, I do not have the updated financial model. And it's going to take time to do it. And so our request at this point is to renew the contract we have. So we can have it with certainty in the business model to secure the investor. What we have to do is update all the elements and should there be a major change, if it's similar plus or five, five percent, as you know, any model has variability. So if there's a major change, I would have no problem coming and sharing, saying, these are the changes and why, and it might impact the TIF. As of today, I can't tell you between the ups and the downs. I think that would be more up because revenue will go up, so there will be more sales tax. So it's intuitively this way, but I do not have the financial model updated, unfortunately. I mean, I'm spending a lot of time selling the company. So, so we, what we need is to re-secure the Lura for a period. So we can go through this exercise with the, with the investor, secure the investor, get the changes in the design to meet the new requirements. And then secure. If we get the first one, we'll get the second one. I'll be there, we'll be there. And then make it happen. So there's a set of things that need to happen with, if you ask me for certainty, I do not have certainty. I know we need the TIF in order for the project to be viable. And we can't have a TIF, I'm going to be, we would appreciate that in the same terms where there's no change of priority orders between whomever. So, so we can't put our project at risk in order to fund another project. I'm being very direct here. We've got the TIF, so I'm going to be even more direct. We've got the TIF, we can get a hotel to be viable. That's as plain as it can be. I understand that by being late compared to the original, then that might change because of the duration. And we love to refine it together, but it will help if we can re-secure a renewal for a year. If you need certain conditions along the way, you tell us the conditions, I think that's reasonable, but that's where we stand. Anything else that you're going to forget?
I suspect that you might want to mention the changes we might ask for in the town because that might have raised some alarms. We're not going to ask for a third floor or anything like that. We just have to reconfigure some space. We met with the builder yesterday. He thinks it's very doable. So there's nothing dramatic that we would ask for.
But for example, if some of you would remember the drawings, it was a U. What they say now is you're better have a circle with more rooms in the south because your balance of the F and B food and beverage versus hotel would be better. And so it reduces the risk. And so that's why when I say impact on the redesign, that's what I mean. Our goal from the beginning has been to remain within the town building code as you noticed. So we think there's a way to get there, even if we're asking for more of this or more of that, we think we can get halfway and if the finance work, we won't have to push for, for more. That's do it make sense or did I?
Well, thank you so much. We'll see if anyone on the authority has any questions. Is that okay? Absolutely. Yeah. All right. Who has questions for Moss Rock? Attorney Ponder.
Hi, Caitlin Ponder, Legal Counsel to the Authority. I thought I would just frame up a few things as, as was just described. As the board likely knows, you have an existing reimbursement agreement that you entered into with Moss Rock in, I think, twenty twenty three. And it has been amended twice now to extend out the date. And currently, as it stands, the agreement will automatically terminate on December sixteenth twenty twenty five if construction has not commenced. And so I, I think what you're hearing kind of a request for an extension of that. But that is current, the kind of current posture of the existing agreement. And just the other piece that I would share is as it stands, the agreement only would capture increment off of this project, that this project generates that, that could be pledged if it generates increment. So and happy to answer other questions about the agreement. I just wanted to kind of frame that up. Oh, sorry. One other thing. I was gonna say, and one of the reasons that Moss Rock is in presenting, maybe additionally the request for an amendment, but the other aspect of the most recent amendment was requiring quarterly reports to the board about the status of financing and progress in light of kind of those additional extensions that you've given. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a question. Attorney Ponder, how do we define construction?
Let me pull it up.
Well, she's pulling up, you're requesting on December sixteen twenty six extension to that.
That would be, that would be great. Now, if we can go faster, we would, but I'd rather give us good time.
Okay, commencement of construction is defined as visible commencement by the developer of actual physical operations on the property for the construction of the project after obtaining any necessary licenses or permits from the town. And then it clarifies that commencement of construction does not include the undergrounding of any utilities by the developer or the town.
Well, I'll, I'll go my question and see if anybody else in the inventory has any.
Just, I just have one. So you talked about the reconfiguration of the hotel. It won't be the U shape that we initially.
It, it's going to be, for example, less meeting rooms. I mean, Riverdale just built a big, so if you've got more meeting rooms, less meeting rooms and use the meeting rooms to move the restaurant down the back and gets more return on the front. Today, we had a U, we would have a hole. So on the, on the Broadway side, it would not be open because the feedback was you don't need to to open space. You've got the rooftop bar. And today we've got the courtyard in the middle. And because we had a courtyard, we had it open on Broadway and we could have a floor there that could give more space to add a few rooms, which would help with the balance of room revenue versus food and beverage revenue.
So there will be rooms added, there'll be more than the same.
We, we will come back to the warranty book to see if we can get more of that. Yes.
Well, that is a question for staff. Would that require an amendment to the development agreement?
I'm sure it would. I believe that it is defined in there that it would be of seventy nine room.
Yes.
Yes.
Now, if we find other ways to reduce the cost, so we don't have to increase the revenue, I would be happy to have more breaks on cost. But from the feedback we got, it's.
More rooms is more nightly, nightly tax back to the town.
It is indeed. And more people in town.
Right.
Spending their money, we hope.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. And let me practice this by, I was on the board of trustees when we approved the development agreement, but by the time U R A agreement reached, as you mentioned, it was somewhat delayed. By the time it was U R A provision, I was off the board. So most of my knowledge stemmed from twenty twenty two, and I'm on a trustee fund. And there are some things that have changed from the financial model that existed when the board starts these. One of them that directly goes to revenues from the to the hotel and the U R A is when the presentation was made to the U R A Commission in April of twenty twenty two, the current assessed value of the property that's reflected in the presentation was one million six hundred thousand dollars at that time. I looked today on the Ota County Assessors website and the current assessed value is four hundred and eighty three thousand dollars, which reflects the demolition of buildings thereafter. So I guess one question, and I guess it's both for the presenters and, and staff and attorney wonder is that million one basically difference in assessed value before you actually start construction? Will that provide a greater tax increment? If you end up spending the same amount or a greater amount on the construction costs, which is why I think they get the initial value for. We increased the increment and therefore, but are we gonna increase the potential tax increment that will flow both to the property owner and to the U R A?
I'll take a stab at this. Cassie, please jump in. So certainly that will create another one point two million dollars in ability of generating more TIF, especially if the value or the investment is assessed higher than what we thought in twenty twenty two as well. To be able to know if it will make up the difference of what we've lost in numbers of years they're able to generate would take some financial modeling to do, but we can certainly give it a shot based on hypothetical numbers.
Say a little more about that.
Okay, we, we used numbers, projections in the financial modeling based on its current assessed value back in twenty two and how much we thought it would be valued at, at the time the project was committed. So what we're saying is if it's, if it's valued one point two million dollars less now, it allows for that much more generation.
That part I'm following. That's what you said.
The, the TIF. The the TIF, the life of this downtown TIF lasts through 2040. And so instead of having 20, 18 years of generating TIF, they'll be down to 14 or whatever we will be at.
Director Icestone has her hand raised.
The base value in the current agreement is the 1.2, I'm guessing. So the base value will not change unless the authority changes it in the current agreement. However, without knowing a definitive answer of how these old base numbers versus new base numbers impact the actual TIF that goes and the calculation that the assessor does that goes into the Lions Urban Renewal Authority. I can't definitively say that that difference would be what Moss Rock would get and what would go into the authority TIF.
In my mind, not a TIF calculation proper, okay? It went down. I received the assessment for next year. It's back up significantly, significantly. Thank you enough that I I pushed back and they told me that I was wrong. So between the tax rate that has dramatically increased between 2023 and this, there might also be a balancing act because the tax rate changed dramatically.
That that was my next question. Or approve development agreement, our Lions lodging tax was $2 per night. It was thereafter changed to 5%. I couldn't tell from the presentation to the U R A in 2023. Or actually, what was the U R A presentation and calculation of revenues? Was it based on the $2 or neither the 5% rate?
And when I say tax rate, it's normally this one.
Of the property that is.
Property tax rate change, which is quite dramatically. I know because I've had to pay the bills. So so in a perfect world, I would update all our assumption. I would work with the town to give them all the assumptions. They will update based on timing and data. And you would have a perfect, you know, perfect forecast number. I don't know if we can be ready early enough to do this the right way. And that's why my my proposition was can we renew as is and then update? So at least I have certainty that to lock the investor. That's basically the way I'm framing it.
The anticipation would be because these numbers have changed and we're not even sure what where we start with the base. You need to do new financial models and from the perspective of both the U R A board and the town board. We need to look again, look anew at what are anticipated revenues.
Yes.
We need basically new financial modeling on both sides, I think, in order. I mean, as you already said, the town board will have to consider probably the development agreement. When you have a development agreement in a town like this of that magnitude, we tend to look pretty carefully at the financial details. So I think we're gonna have to take a fresh look at that. Both sides. If we were to extend this deadline here, we're really, I suppose, you're asking us to extend the deadline under an agreement, it's probably gonna have to be modified as well.
Yes. And I understand probably needs to be, everybody needs to have all the basic work done. So it's been this notion of certainty versus accuracy.
Who do you anticipate will do the new financial? Because recalling back two years ago, the financial modeling that was done when the development plan was presented was very well done. Defense is very stock quality, experts who they have.
I plan to use the same person, the same market research group and the same person. We've been in touch all along.
Other questions from the authority? Yes.
I do have a question and I apologize because this is the first time I'm working in in this conversation on Moss with Moss Rock and the this Lura. When I was looking through the documents that were the kind of the predocuments prior to 2025 here, my curiosity was around the Exhibit A and the residuals and the resolution. So what I'm hearing is a request for the extension and just wondering if Exhibit A is Exhibit A is not dated. I'm guessing it was.
Can you remind me what is using today, please?
It's it's titled Exhibit A Eligible Improvements.
Oh, yes, I remember very well.
But I'm just sharing that from a historical standpoint, that document's not dated. I'm guessing it's somewhere before the attachment that we just signed on March 16th, 2023. And so I'm just curious for the Lura, are those also numbers that would have to be looked at again for eligible improvement? So my curiosity was what are those real numbers now? What was the process? Well, is there still a pending process in regards to an approval of what's listed in here in Blight? Not just remediation, but painting a mural, like those types of different pieces? If that had been a separate process that was already approved and then how the numbers would be addressed if an extension was to be. So those are just.
Those are great questions. Thank you. Yeah. And it's always great to get a fresh perspective, too. I was on the board when this project, for the inception of this project. So so it's good to take another look at it. And and my understanding would be that all of the numbers would have to be revisited. There's no question about that. And we may want to talk about revisiting the public improvements like the mural when we talked about revised development agreement or any development agreement. So the way I'm seeing this, and please somebody correct me if I'm wrong, is that so you're we're talking about an extension to the current agreement, knowing that what is in the current agreement could be completely renegotiated during that extension? Do I have that right?
You are hearing the request, right? Yes. The other options are to let the current contract expire and renegotiate a new agreement. That's the other option, which of course doesn't work as well when you're trying to get your financing with the bank.
Yeah, I I think that would not be great for the feasibility of the project.
So in our last meeting, we talked about making sure that when we do these extensions that we are not the ones paying for our hard costs related to that. Would that have to be renegotiated in the present agreement?
Yes, we've already talked with Moss Rock and they have agreed to pay for legal fees up till now, as well as put down the $5,000 escrow that is in the policy moving forward with the new agreement.
Commissioner Luchman, you have something?
Yeah, thank you. Connected to the question of, I heard what you were saying in regards to it makes it challenging to go to a bank and leverage financing or get long-term agreements when you don't have a current agreement from first party. And I heard the domino effect. And I'm just curious from where you're sitting of, to me, if I was the banker or the portfolio lender or the investor, I would have trouble moving forward on an agreement that's been extended a variety of times that's already a couple of years old, given all of the cost parameters that you were talking about. So I'm just wondering, it seems like neither one of them is the ideal situation and I I don't believe we're, that asked to me is not a real extension. It's actually, we need to renegotiate and come to a different to redraw everything. So that just doesn't seem like the right term. And I don't know from a finance standpoint, from where you're sitting, if there is a different term that we should be discussing. Because I just heard expiration or renewing terms that we don't know yet, which is different than renewing.
I guess another option could be that we extend the current agreement for a very short time, like three or four months to give us time to renegotiate a new full contract that would have, you know, so that it's also then a motivator to get it renegotiated, get the new numbers in and enter a new agreement with a new deadline and accurate numbers.
So I'm curious how you feel your potential investors would view that.
I was processing your question, which is a very good question. Because we've had this potential investor in the loop for three years. It's not as if it's a new investment group. So he knows the story. And he's the one, as much as I, this week, who also wants us to advance, he's got the same need. The issue is so let me step back. I might be wrong. If I'm wrong, please correct me. My understanding is in the current contract, it's as a percentage of the taxes generated for a duration with a maximum. So in it, we use it and we've got the timing and what happens based on the taxes. The point is, as of today, with what we have, if we can have the same terms, it would be okay. Knowing that it will change, but the same way when we sign the contract, you never know what your revenue is going to be. It's a theoretical number. So it's no more theoretical with this than the other. The difference is we know it's wrong, when usually we don't want to know. Okay. But it's a forecast. So because the things that are moving up and down, if I were the betting person, I bet we're going to arrive to almost the same thing. There's been such an increase in tax and there's an increasing price and there will be a higher volume. So yes, there's a shorter duration, but if I get this notion of whatever percentage for the duration with a maximum of we're willing to be off by what, 10%? But the certainty of having the commitment by the talent makes a difference. So you're right. We know it's wrong, but what is the variability? And compared to what? So it's true that having the same investor for discussion in three years helps.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
As to that three or four month extension, I'd be more inclined to like go out six, we're six months from a new board. It's probably something to be, or want to current board to look at if you're not in a limited agreement rather than a new board. So I think it probably ought to be looked at before the end of this or trustees and the U R A commissioners turn.
I would be not on it for a year.
And if you're talking about extensions, we did get a new agreement. I'm partially inclined to hold the extension, knowing that in the meantime, I mean, but I know agreements can be negotiated in the development.
It just seems to me if we we know that's going to be the case, you're saying that having the existing agreement, the principals involved are aware that these numbers are going to have to be redone. Then it would seem to me that it'd be we want this built, seem to me that would be in our best interest to give you the timeframe you're requesting to give you the ability to I don't know, three months, you're gonna have clue how it would be renegotiated, or even a six months.
Three months. I'm sorry to say, I'm so underwater. We've said my company, I have no time. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm figuring it. Yeah, you have some of.
So so three months, I know it's not enough. I'm not going to give you false expectations. Six months is going to be tight. If we can go faster, I'm first one we push because I know there's a deadline. There's more money or faster. Until three months is too short between the holidays and the sale of the company, there's no way we can get it done.
Commissioner Lee Williams, do you have any thoughts?
I have a question. One, as we try to understand what kind of modeling you would need to do and what kind of rethinking of various aspects of the project you would need to do. I think it would help me at least to get some comfort that that could get done in six months or a year. If I understood why it hadn't happened in the last couple of years, if I were in your position, I would have been continuously rethinking the model. And of course, there are new factors and new estimates that come all the time. And what I did a year ago might not be interesting today. But I would have said, I would have had a few versions of new models by now.
So I can answer partially or totally. Early 2024, we hired the marketing firm to redo the market. So we already know where 24 was versus 22. So yes, we also approached the builder to to give us an estimate of a change of cost last year. And so we, at the time, it was plus 5%. So we did some of it. Every time, but the market changes and the investor, the lead investor was basically saying, I'm not going to engage in any discussion. It's useless. We're not going to do. So I I've been in touch with this group three years in a row. And the reason that we've been working more or less three months is because they're reengaging. If you don't, if the investors don't reengage, I'm sorry, but I'm not going to spend money paying for studies.
It's quite expensive.
So so it's really a question of are the investors reengaging or not? So we we did it early 2024.
It's, I want to emphasize too, not reengaging wasn't personal to this project. They're not engaging with anyone. So the the hospitality market in this area of projects like this just ground to the halt.
So it's it's a mix, but it's a good question because you you can't hire a marketing survey every six months. I mean, it's it's ridiculous, but even the minute the investors started to reengage, that's when like, okay, let's go back. And there's another factor, I'm sorry to say, which is, and I said, when was it? Six months ago or again, an update? The backup plan has been all along that if we can get the investor I'm I'm going to work to sell my company, so I would have less investment group to bring. We need the lead. But by adding a second one already desecured plus me selling my company, it's way easier than engaging three different investment groups. Way easier. So there's also where did I spend my time? And so between the fire last year and and this, there's also a timing issue. I'm sorry to say, there are no notions.
Oh, fair.
And just one more question, I think, and that is if we were to contemplate a one-year extension, is that an extension to the date of beginning construction? Or is that building in a year to remodel, we think, renegotiate?
Oh, for me, remodel. If you ask what I said as a deadline, we would have started by the end of the year. The goal would be after Christmas, I can start surveying December. Get the modeling, come back, get the architect, get the new drawings, go back to the town permitting, get feedback. First quarter to April. Let's let's say we get to a model that works for everybody. Then you go to the next level of design. So we've already had done engineering, for example. We're going to have to redo engineering. So we're going to have to go to the next level for all the engineering and the and the mechanical. And sign the investor group. By my goal would be by the end of the first quarter, get the second one to line up, pay for my to hopefully get permitting by the summer and then right before the end of the year. That's if if you ask me. That's if you ask me, the next two months. I'm under water, so I'm sorry to say, some of you have sold businesses, you know, in the days. So it's it's a question of lining up. Markets survey takes six weeks. It would be to right around in before next year.
Commissioner Wise, we can't see you. But I'm curious to know if you have any questions or thoughts?
Um, I think everything has been covered by what's already been asked. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Commissioner Hammer?
And maybe you covered this earlier, but well, first of all, thank you for coming and sharing and kind of showing us Peter Kurtz on what's going on. Uh but for your lead investor, so it was. What's it gonna take for them to get on board? And I I know we need this. Date extended on the tip. But but, you know, I've been hearing for a couple of years now, we're waiting on interest rates and dropping, dropping. Maybe a little bit, but you know, with tariffs and all the other craziness going on, so. At what point does he pull the trigger?
I can't talk on these people.
Oh, I understand.
You can give you an opinion.
Certainly talk to them in.
I can give you an opinion, okay? There's, he needs as much as you do or I do, an updated model. So he has. He just. Raised money for a hotel in Missoula, Montana. So he knows the interest rates you can get for construction. Okay, so and he knows you're going to go down, but he just did one. So he he already knows what interest rates are available now, which are lower than a year ago, because the banks have added. Not it's not only the Fed's interest rates, they had added on top of it. Risk. So he knows what can happen and he has a good sense of what he can get from the banks. He's got four banks lined up. We last last time, we had lined up one bank by working with him, when we have competing banks. So it's also another way of trying to mitigate. He's well aware that the prices and the volumes have changed, so we're going to need to do the pricing and volume. And we are going to need to do some of the redesign he talked with us about, which should reduce the cost. One of his points was, we need to find a way to reduce the cost. And so that's why last night we had dinner, as Edna said, with the builder. Because as we get feedback on one side, we go to the other side. And and we do this. You know it probably better than I do. So. He's going to need some certainty. On the building costs with the new items. So for example, the feedback from the builder is, yes, material goes up. But labor has got has gone down because there's there's been so few projects. That we had a huge shortage of labor. We we had to pay a premium in order to get the resources. We don't need to pay a premium. And. The builder doesn't think it's going to change in the next six months or whatever, so the forecast should take into account, plus the material, less than the labor. So when we are, to go back to your question, for the investor, interest, he's got a good sense of it. Access to investors, because he just raised, he knows what the investors are looking for. And he told me, and yes, I have no problem raising. He told me, I don't even need you to give more money. I I can raise the money. But if you put more in it, it will be easier, because you're giving a sense of certainty or your confidence in the project. So he knows he can get the investors behind him. We need the cost down, we need to update on the revenue. And and we need to secure all the help we can.
Okay, thank you. And the reason I ask that, because I'm in favor of of renewing this and pushing, you know, for another year, but. I don't want to be sitting here a year from now going. We're having the same discussion waiting on interest rates, which of course, none of us have any control over. So it's good to hear these other factors that. You know, are going into the.
Trust me, I don't want to be here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lowell, did you have anything else? Commissioner Cole?
Uh it seems to me that unless there's another multimillion dollar project coming down the pipe. This is the only project that actually makes the U R A. Worth our time, so I think we should have money. Otherwise, why are we here?
Commissioner Driste?
Trying to envision. You know, sort of a. Inseptual level, what the possibilities are. It does seem that it's possible, but it's not a slam dunk. That that things are going to happen. But I'm thinking. Downside compared to upside. The upside is pretty strong. There's not a terrible amount of downside. I mean, there's some expense for. For for things that we'll have to do, but not not a lot. And so I think it's better to move forward than to. You know, put too many restrictions on it or to kill it at this time.
Commissioner, what's your?
Are you just asking for general comments or if there's any additional questions, like, excuse me, this is just a newer question?
Yeah, right. Yes.
I still have some just preliminary questions, and I was also looking at what I thought was some of the agenda questions for today's meeting. That we're asking about, like, for example, exhibit A or those eligible costs, but I'm not clear if that conversation we're even had.
That's for the next project we're going to talk about.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And I also, I. So I'm trying to decide how much I should say or just if I should just be a listener in this group, and partly because I'm. Doing other urban renewal authority projects, and so blight is different than. What I'm understanding, just from this piece of paper, I haven't toured the property, so I just feel like I'm a little bit of a disadvantage. But happy to receive the developments, if you want to send this to me directly. From the last couple of months that we all have been meeting, and I appreciate being here, one, and then also. Which fun to send the curassies that I have about the project.
Yeah, thank you, and and I appreciate that this is your your first meeting with us, and so. Um, there's probably a lot to catch up on, and we'll make sure that we give you what you need.
Thank you.
I have one more comment. Timing really is very important because of the. Twenty forty limit. Because every year. That of delay, it's something north of. Three hundred thousand or maybe four hundred thousand in that neighborhood. That that would not be available because of the time. So. Speed really is quite important, quite an important factor.
I'm fully agreed. Case doesn't sow a cost of carrying an asset that doesn't create value with its cost. So if you if if you ask me, do I consider speed credible? I do. Every year that we do not have this asset, quite useful revenue, we have to pay taxes. So I have the same interest.
So Attorney Ponder, I have a procedural question for you. It sounds like the majority of the authority is supportive of extending the agreement for a year. Obviously, we're not taking a formal vote on that. There's no amendment to approve or not. So what would the next steps then be?
Uh, I think what would be helpful is if someone would make a motion to direct staff to prepare an amendment for consideration by the board at a next meeting. Um, and it sounds like as part of that motion, you would want to include an obligation to kind of pay an escrow. To pay for kind of the fees associated with preparing that amendment.
Would somebody like to make that motion?
I move that we request the staff to prepare. Uh, your word to. For a one year to December sixteen, twenty twenty six amendment. And the additional work needs to be done that assures that all expenses related. To the town during that timeframe are covered by the.
Any discussion on that motion? Um, is the, I have a question for staff. Um, the escrow, the five thousand escrow. Is that, would that be included in this amendment as a policy of the U R A right now, but. Should it be included?
I think that's what she was saying.
Yeah, I can add that in.
Okay, great. I thought she was saying the expense encouraged. All right, anyone else? Or not call for the vote on it now?
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
And if you feel free to abstain, Commissioner Loachman.
All right, all in favor with Commissioner, oh, trustee. You've said no, so okay.
He said yes.
Are you are you voting yes or are you voting?
Yes, okay. All in favor with Commissioner Loachman abstaining?
Great, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, I really appreciate it. You're welcome.
That's how I could become a man.
Thank you. All right, um, our next item of general business is discussion direction. Resolution twenty five zero two, resolution of the Town of Lions Urban Renova Theory, Revenue and Redevelopment of Reimbursement Agreement. Forty four fifty five West Fallback South West Sea for Park and the F four or two Main Street Lines. Welcome.
Hi.
And welcome to your assistance.
Thank you, Chair. We were hoping to bring forward to you a resolution with the development agreement for this meeting, and. We still have some gaps in our discussion about it, so the applicant agreed. To let us put this off for a meeting to get that input from. The authority so that we can go back and complete it. Complete a reimbursement agreement as you guys had directed us to at the last meeting. So we did include in the packet the draft development reimbursement agreement. With several comments in it, as well as a list of questions. That we would like to talk with. Uh, the authority and the applicant about so we could get this completed.
Thank you, I really appreciate the work that staff put into. Gathering the questions and the discussion points that we need to have. Would the applicant like to say?
Um, I think we haven't had a chance to actually go through any of the comments since they came in today, so. I think we're mostly just listening at this point.
All right, so. Maybe it would be helpful to, in the background information section in the cover memo. There are a number of questions, so if the authority agrees, perhaps it would be helpful to discuss those point by point. So the first question is, what would the board like to see as the outside date to commence construction?
This is, this is one of those issues we've learned over time and agreements is. That we need a starting date, or these can hang out there indefinitely. Which then really messes things up when it comes to reimbursement and the the modeling, so. Uh, we know that the applicant is fully intense to move forward with this project as soon as. Uh, they have met all the obligations through the board of trustees and the authority, so. We were wondering if commencement of construction.
Hasn't, and we're doing the shoring now, does that?
That is, that's the beginning, similar to what you just heard at the last definition of what is construction. It needs to show ongoing, ongoing effort, so you could stop right there. Which is what happened at the hotel, and then it could sit for a long time. So, um, I don't know if anyone on the authority wants to suggest a date or.
Does the applicant have any suggestion for?
No, I think, I mean, the reality is that we definitely need the tip in order to move beyond cleaning up the site that we're doing now. But we fully intend to keep moving forward, so.
Six months out of it?
I think so.
To start construction?
Where where are, where are you with like the permitting process? I know we have a development agreement to review.
Monday.
On Monday, can.
Doing foundation work now. I'm not sure if the time would be on that, but I mean, if it's with the engineers, if there are engineers on site today. The intent has always been to begin construction immediately after. Yes, so like, we originally thought this month, so I guess it'd be next month.
Okay.
So how about if we start in six months and. For the agreement, we still have a few weeks before you'll be taking action on this, so. If something, you find out something changes. Mention that, but.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a, it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg, knowing that the board has not approved the development agreement yet. So it's difficult to, you know. Um, and that's not a function of the authority, it's a function of the board, so, okay. Is, anybody have any problem with six months? For a draft? Attorney Ponder?
Thanks, uh, just to clarify on the six months, I assume that would be from the time that the agreement gets signed, which would be a future date. I think we, in the draft that we turned, had December fifteenth or sixteenth, twenty twenty six. But can certainly kind of make it. Six months from the effective date of the agreement, if that's the board's direction.
Right, I think it is so. Did you have some questions?
I do, and and I also see there's somebody else on the screen. So I wonder, I I can share my questions. I just found this packet online, the packet with the description of this particular project wasn't. Included in today's material, so I apologize if just looking at it. So first question. Has the TIF already been approved for this applicant?
This is the final discussion before we bring it forward. For approval.
Okay, and so I'll just share from the county perspective, which I think is why. For TIF increment, in general, we're looking for housing, we're looking for. Affordable housing, and this looks like a commercial project, so that was my initial question that I had made in my notes before I got here was. Where the housing in in just in general is for TIF. And I was also looking as similar to what I said in the other one, looking at what is the definition of blight and how that connects to TIF. So there's just a couple of things I'm reminded of, but again, I'm just looking through the entire document online. Thank you, it's a bit of a turn, but it's something.
So unless Attorney Ponder wants to explain, our downtown TIF district was. Developed prior to the state requirement to have the county and school district at the table. And so this does feel a little different probably for you. Because neither the last project we discussed nor this one have a housing component.
Correct.
So we understand that, but just so you know too, this was the downtown district. When it was formed, that wasn't.
Thank you.
And maybe just for Commissioner Loachman's knowledge, do you want to just briefly explain what the project is, what you'll be building and how it'll be used?
Yeah, so if you recall, there's a fire on the corner of Fourth and Main. Few years ago, so.
So this is that building.
Um, and so we're rebuilding a commercial building in its place, and just a two-story mixed-use. Retail, sales tax generating businesses on the street level and a working space up top. There's no parking on on the property. We're building right up to the property line, which is why housing really wasn't much of an option. Yeah, so we're looking at kind of putting some community needed services back in the building. Um, we're hoping to have a general. Um, we're hoping to have a general store, mail and shipping, um, some kind of help of homeless options.
And I'm more than happy, the development agreement that the board's considering on Monday has the full, I'll send that to you, as well, so you can see what they're considering, because we had a presentation on the detail of the architecture and construction or. Okay, great, awesome those.
Okay. Thank you, kind of one other question, and just again, and just to, thank you everybody for your graciousness on the time. I found the four O two Main Street development, I think it's probably the deck online. One of the other asks that we hear from our mountain communities throughout the region is around healthcare. This one looked more like retail office space, kind of working space, but I don't want to miss something if there was an intent in leaving that community need.
Um, there is actually, so, I mean, at the end of the day, we're kind of subject to who is able to be tenant. Um, but one of the most interested kind of parties is the medical practitioner doing like, um, primary like being like here.
Okay.
So that is one of the potential uses, however, it's still speculative issues.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so let's move on to point two, which is in section fourteen. Um, and that is the question around conveying the property and assigning the agreement to a future entity. Um, that's currently being formed called Roots to Revival.
I think that'll be sorted by the time we finish negotiations, we just had some asking to do on the backend. There was a kind of complicated. Transfer ownership, it'll, I think it'll be cleared out and it'll all be rooted to revival.
Alright, this time next one? Oh, okay, great, so you'll see this document change titles totally.
So Commissioner Loachman for, um, for your education, Paul Tamorello, um, and Renee Double Bay on, uh, a really great development company, I can't believe. Think Generator, um, and we've been working with Think Generator for quite some time now on some other properties and Think Generator has teamed up with Sarah Lorraine and her husband Bart for this particular project. So, and that partnership, I'm assuming, is what Roots to Revival.
Yeah, it'll be. Okay, thank you, I just have one additional question, I'm just looking at the documents that were for this meeting. So that, in, in the questions, since you're not looking at my computer, it's talking about number two on the list, section fourteen. Uh, assigning the agreement to future entity that they are forming, so the they was the question that I had, it sounds like they're the same parties.
Yeah.
And so then that.
Yeah, the current owner of the property was like a ten thirty-one exchange, that's just all very complicated.
Thank you.
Um, and then point three in the document, are there any additional asks that Laura has at this developer? So we can exchange, um, additional project-related items. Um, there's a mention of the materials used and, uh, the Moss Rock project among other things, and I know that Ms. Loring is, um, she's also the Chair of our Restore Preservation Committee and is I believe that the intention of the project is to have it aesthetically fit within our downtown. Um, so curious about, I, I personally don't feel like, um, that needs to be a requirement of this agreement because I believe it's going to be done in the course of building. Um, but curious to know what other commissioners think?
I mean, I mean, that's not something I think the, uh, the lines of the normal authority needs to weigh in on the town.
The only way it assists the developer is if you require it here, they can ask for reimbursement of it.
I see.
Yes, so that if there's an additional cost to use local sandstone as ten percent of the facade or something. And you guys require that, they can then use their they, they can then use their increments to offset the costs between brick, which is what they're proposing in stone. Now, the, when you are seated as the Board of Trustees, you can in the development agreement say, yes, you will use sandstone at a minimum under windows, above doorways, things like that, and then that would be their issue to figure out. But if you consider that a way to, um, help improve the blight and maintain the character of downtown and all the different factors we're trying to gain in this urban renewal area. Then they would be to use those costs toward their increment, they generate toward that cost.
See.
We could still do that at the next meeting with the agreement in front of us, though, right?
Sure.
After it's gone through the board review.
I just, I, the reason, we just wanted to put it out there because you did do it with the hotel. You wanted the hotel to have a specific, you know, a minimal amount of local stone used to keep that being lean.
That got done at the board level first.
I think it did. Those were some long meetings.
Yeah.
And it may have been at the board level and then they turned around and requested it.
Okay, hopefully they're going to make that requirement, it'll be seen in the exit building or building.
Well, I, I think, and I think that's Commissioner Browning's point is that, um, until we discuss the development agreement. We, I think we should move that as a blank for our next.
And then you can make it as an amendment to the agreement, if you want to.
So in Schedule A, there is a hundred and eighty thousand slotted for sandstone, so. If, if we approve it, I mean, I don't know what Schedule A's locked and loaded, the board, uh, that's up for discussion. I personally would, I think we want to include some percentage of sandstone, so to, to encourage the development to, uh, to do that. Especially if we included it already in the hotel, would be nice to have some level of compatibility from Catty Corner across there.
I'll ship, and obviously you'll see called the detail in the renderings on Monday in the hearing, and we go into quite a bit of detail comparing kind of what the renderings look like compared to the design guidelines, and so kind of what, I guess what effort we've made and kind of subsequently what the, I guess, extending costs are, would like the amount of blazing, you know, of sandstone. I truly don't know what percentage of sandstone is there, but you can see in the rendering, it's kind of where we put it, and we put, um, kind of what looks more like a reclaimed brick in our rendering right now as well. Um, I don't know what percentage of it.
And Commissioner Hammer, just, just for the sake of clarity, probably for the sake of everyone's clarity, this item is a discussion direction item. So, um, we won't be voting on a resolution tonight. Um, this is to give staff and the applicant direction in terms of, sort of think of it sort of like a working session.
Yeah, this whole meeting tonight is somewhat of a workshop.
Yeah.
As we've just mentioned, uh, the, the proposal, because of P C D C, uh, we do it, and the proposal, um, very clearly meets the current commercial design guidelines. Um, and that could be, to, to me, that's reinforcing of, of, of the notion of having the, uh, sandstone and or brick, uh, can, consistency with the other buildings in, in, in downtown area. Just a reinforcing element.
Great. Commissioner Weiss, do you have any, any thoughts, or I, I'm trying to, um, remember that you're there because we can't see you, so.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I mean, I am excited by the fact that, um, you know, we're charged with eliminating blight and any steps towards that, I think are, are positive. Um, so, um, I'm glad to hear we're moving in that direction.
Thank you, um, and if you raise your hand and I don't see you, please feel free to pipe up if you have something to say, okay? Um, the next item, yeah, please.
Couple of things, one, in terms of any asks about the physical characteristics of the property, we're kind of those of us who are the Board of Trustees and the U R A Commissioner kind of thing to get right now, because it remains a quasi judicial matter. We're wearing our hats as trustees, so that we're not supposed to even dig into the details or ask questions, but we haven't seen, so we haven't seen the details yet, we're not until Monday, so it's kind of hard for us to suggest things when we're supposed to have not communicated about this. We were caught in the middle.
Well, and I think that's why, uh, why what we're coming down to right now is we're not going to give any direction as the authority until the board has an opportunity to make the development agreement.
I, I have a kind of, a, a different ask, it's kind of a financial details ask that follows up on a question that I asked to Mr. Tamborello when they made their presentation. The presentation that was in the August twenty-first packet showed, when it was calculating the increment uh, from base to increment and asking for TIF financing, showed a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar nine hundred actual value for the property. But again, I looked on the, on the assessor's website and it says it now, and it may be changes again by the first year. It's three hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars, and so I think, I, I, there were questions raised at the hotel because there was such a, there was a time lag between what their ask was and their calculations of what the, what the TIF increment would, would be until they finally got it approved. I think it would be good to kind of update those and see, okay, what, and have us understand as a U R A Commission. What base are we starting from? Because until you get that, you can't calculate what the TIF sharing amounts are going to be.
I would imagine it should be a relatively minor difference in the scheme of things. The, the one, the, the number that was in there was what the assessed value was in November of twenty twenty-four when we first originally expressed our interest. Um, and it was, forgive me, I'm clearly not the developer in the room, so I don't, I don't know the terminology, but that property was plotted as like condominiums. It was like, several different condominiums, and as they were sorting that out, which was happening around the time you asked that question. So the assessed values were all over the place and inaccurate on the website when we last saw you. As that was being sorted out and we have not gotten the real number, but I think that's something that we would have before the next argument, so it does need to be updated.
Yeah.
Um, but it's just kind of been a box because of that switch from the condos to.
I understand it, anticipating that month, whenever it is, that we are asked as a U R A Commission to approve the TIF agreement. It would be best to have updated as accurate as possible protection numbers on what's going on at U R A as well as the developer.
I think I went wrong, but I think Cassie was working, she's the associate.
Alright, thank you.
But she's as frustrated. It's hard, it changed, it's been changing a lot, and as we, you know, we found out just now Moss Rock two, we do this too far ahead and the numbers change, or if there's a change of situation on that property, but knowing you're planning to move forward right away will, will be helpful.
Anything else on that piece? So, um, number four is a note that the developer has escorted a five thousand dollar payment for legal expenses. Which is great, so we'll want to make sure that that's included in the agreement. Do we have a contingency if the legal expenses um, are more than five thousand dollars?
What we do is, um, when we get to about two-thirds of the amount used, we notify them. That's how we do it in, um, the planning area of, for the town. And we notify them if we're not near the end of the project that we may need more.
Okay. Um, so on to the eligible costs in Exhibit A of the resolution, which begins on page eighteen of that document. And so, um, and Steph, please let us know what the highlighted yellow is.
We can, if you don't mind, just starting at the top.
Sure.
Um, these are categories and items that are typically reimbursable through TIF. Even if they've already occurred, um, if, if they're listed in this exhibit. The question, I think, on, um, the demolition and site remediation, environmental was, were those covered by the insurance, and if so, I don't think we can include those here. And you may have to ask.
I, I do need to ask, I know like a couple of them, and I, and I apologize, but I, you know, I was the one who wrote this exhibit, so I might have also just misstated things. Um, for some of like the excavation and debris hauling, like that's continuing to happen, like right now they're they're hauling away rubble from the nineteen sixty-seven fire, because they buried that building, as we learned, so in just trying to do the shoring. So there, those expenses are still being accrued, but what insurance covered and what is being done now, I, I definitely don't know where that line is drawn.
And, and I, I think Attorney Quander can confirm, but we, you certainly can cover costs that have already occurred. Such is the case with the hotel, we can still cover the cost of the demolition. In this case, though, if it was fire insurance, I don't think we can.
No, it's, if it's already been covered. Then why would we?
Yeah, but, and then the, the filling in of the basement, I, I don't believe insurance covered that, because I know that was big.
I didn't know, but those were.
But yeah, but I would have to follow up.
Yeah, so that is why this first section was highlighted, just to confirm that we're not, um, we're not making a, a payment for something that you, they've already received. Um, the public murals, hot mural is highlighted because on your last project, again, with the hotel, you encouraged that to meet the public art, um, requirements and reducing light. In this case, the public mural is proposed on the north side of the building. Which will face the Miami building. And it will be up to the, I mean, it's up to you to decide if you want to if, if that is meeting your intended disagreement as well, or not necessary in this case.
And is that, you know, being mindful of the fact that we're going to talk about the development agreement on Monday? Is that something that maybe we shouldn't discuss at this meeting, are feelings about that?
I don't know if the attorney has an opinion on that.
I mean, in this meeting, you are wearing your Urban Renewal Authority hat, so it is not a quasi judicial setting. That said, if you think it is, uh, better for this board to kind of not go into some of the, those details now and maybe wait for the board meeting to happen so that that could maybe inform your discussion, that is certainly up to this board, um, yeah.
I, I, that would be my inclination, I don't know what other members think.
Agreed.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, we'll, we'll talk about the artwork at a different point in time, but glad to see it included here.
The items that are not highlighted are certainly eligible, you know, for reimbursement. If, um, the authority, you know, wants to include those of the basement structural, it sounds like we need to find out if filling the basement was part of the settlement or not.
I don't think so, but yeah.
Um, the sandstone, sandstone facade and trim, um, is included here. And, um, the custom storefront, which, uh, what was on? I don't, um, I'm not sure why that one, I didn't highlight them. Some, maybe someone else did it. I, I see all these design as, um, promoting the historic aspect of the building, otherwise someone would not be required to do it at all, they could just put it over.
Just so I understand, with the kind of all that design criteria, specifically kind of the historic continuity. Um, is it still kind of what you mentioned before, the board would need to require it in order for it to be an eligible expense on TIF? For all of those design elements?
I don't believe so in this case, because the historic piece is a, you, we do have historic downtown guidelines that are a requirement. So I think you're okay here. I don't think the sandstone is mentioned. Yeah, no percentage. So, um, that was it, is, we just wanted to go through this list to see if there were. So that was it is we just wanted to go through this list to see if there were any expenses that. Any of you wanted to discuss or feel may not be appropriate. In the agreement. The total of this list is actually about, is that about half of the project?
I think the total project is coming in at a little over four point five on this list.
So it's a it's a large percentage of the overall project.
So attorney Fonder. Can you please remind us what the litmus test is for deciding whether improvements should or should not be eligible for reimbursement?
For, so legally, anything that is curing blight can be funded using tax increment financing. And that can include public improvements. What I would say is, and we can certainly look back to some of your policy guidance documents that you have adopted. There are some authorities that really prefer to only fund public infrastru- or sorry, not public, but infrastructure improvements, for example, because they feel like that's a more appropriate use of tax increment. But legally, it can be any part of a private project because that by being built will cure the blight of, you know, kind of the the current state.
Thank you, that's helpful.
So unless there's comments, staff will plan to prepare. The resolution with the agreement, including any any of these items that are not covered by financials. And then that day you can decide.
If I can just add in a piece and I won't be at the trustee meeting, so but for the Laura is. It would be helpful for me if you don't mind sending a link or document that. What I'm hearing in these conversations a little bit is about what might be. Town guidelines or redevelopment. The TIF definition and policy that you all are using for these reviews. And then I'll be able to weigh in a little bit more on what I what would be my interpretation of what the request might be in regards to exhibits.
So this one, definitely send the development agreement that is complete and that should include some of that detail as well.
And I I think what might also be helpful is staff prepared a really great minds urban renewal authority onboarding guide. Do you still have those?
And that would be helpful for you to have for your reference too.
Thank you, and I will hand up those lots.
Oh, attorney Quander, thank you.
You you actually just covered it, Chair, I was going to suggest that I think there previously been packets that included the bylaws and some of the existing U R A policies that would probably. Be very helpful to make sure that the commissioner has.
And and also the the guardrails that Commissioner Drystone took the charge on a few years ago.
Correct, and then I would just also note that there is one final item or kind of question in the staff memo.
Yes. And that question is.
I'm happy to kind of detail this one if that's helpful, it's a little confusing.
That would be great if you'd introduce it.
So as this board has kind of discussed at a couple of prior meetings. The way that the county determines and the way that your plan exists for this area. Is that the increment is determined for the entire plan area, right? So you do not, you as a a Laura, do not get a breakdown calculation of. Increment for each individual property, you get handed a check. For the increment for the entire plan area, which is a much larger area. And we have acknowledged that right now, in fact, that that increment is in the negative, right? You're not receiving dollars because the assessed value of the plan area has actually gone below what it was at the base, but. What you do have in place right now is you have two agreements, one with Saint Rain Market and one with Moss Rock. That do have commitments towards tax increment. And so I think a- as we've discussed in some past meetings. You have already pledged, for example, to Saint Rain Market, a percentage of the overall increment that gets generated and a percentage of that project's increment. And then similarly for the Moss Rock project, assuming you amend it to extend it on further. You have pledged the property tax increment associated with that project. And what ends up happening is because the county says, here is your one value check for the entire plan area is that. Ms. I Stone has to do quite a bit of work kind of to calculate based on the property tax bills and property tax payments from each of those projects. What their individual increment is or our best estimate. And that's what's articulated in the agreement is kind of here's how we we reach what each project's increment is. What we want to acknowledge here is you have already made commitments of increment for Moss Rock to i- its own project generation. And then similarly for Saint Brain Market. And it is quite possible as we dig out of this increment hole that you're in. That the amount of increment generated will not be enough to pay each of those commitments, it will be able to pay a percentage of those commitments. And so we want to kind of understand the board's direction about how you would like Director I Stone and and. Myself legally in this document to prioritize how those get paid if the total increment amount is not. You know, the amount that's 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 owed for that year. Because we think it probably will take some years while you kind of dig out of that hole where, you know, maybe they would get eighty percent of the increment they paid for that year. And that is completely okay under the agreements, right? You only have to pay the increment generated and we acknowledge in the agreements that. You know, you only receive what the county assessor provides and we all have to kind of live by that, but. As we're allocating that, we want to make sure that we have comfort with the board on how you want to prioritize those based on prior commitments or is it? You know, do you kind of prioritize on commitments and then four oh two main comes in or is it kind of an equal percentage that gets split each year, for example? And I would say a- as noted in the the staff report. Four oh two main has asked if there would be the ability for them to kind of receive priority reimbursement payments since. They are kind of commencing construction first, and so. Certainly up to the board, I I I do have some concerns about that in that you are have already entered entered into those agreements. I mean, we're silent about priority, so but that they have made that request, so wanted to bring it to the board.
Looks like you have a question, Commissioner Brownie.
Yeah, I read through the agreement with Saint Brain Market really for the first time today, that was also done after I was off the board and I knew it had gotten done, but I never read the details until the day. My question is, do we really have a choice in that? As as I read that agreement. We are contractually obligated to provide twenty percent of the overall tax increment for the district. For them, to them fortunately only up to the total amount of a hundred fifty thousand dollars. But I also read to that agreement and that was done back in twenty twenty two, I believe. They still haven't commenced, they're even come close to commencing construction, don't know if they will. But yet it's an obligation that we'll likely have to account for before we enter into new agreements. And I look, is there any ability to terminate that agreement? I don't see it, I I think we're, it doesn't have a termination date in it, the grounds for termination require a default on their behalf and. It would be a stretch, I think, the way I read it to to claim a default. So aren't we basically contractually obligated right now to give them priority up to twenty percent of the overall? Tax increment revenue, which at the moment is zero, but once other improvements start factoring in.
But don't they have to make their improvements to be eligible for that?
To be able to get the recovery, yeah, but.
So that's what I think the question.
But if we're projecting future sharing with Saint Brain Market, I mean with the four two four oh two main. Or the hotel three years out. We have to account for the twenty percent that we're required to.
Sure, up to that first one.
Up to up to hundred, and it so happens if if I did the math wrong. If the hotel goes forward, and this is another thing I think to keep in mind, we're talking about actually approving the extension of the hotel agreement. Twenty percent of even one year's increment for the hotel is enough to satisfy the entire hundred fifty thousand dollar obligation, that's. To that magnitude, so that adds another element of importance to the hotel agreement, but if the hotel doesn't start. My concern is that we get into conflicting agreements where. Four two main has asked for an eighty percent, twenty percent sharing in the initial years, we're already committed to twenty percent of the overall agreement. To go to Saint Brain Market. Can we do both and do we have any choice legally? Other than risking a breach of contracts to give priority to that twenty percent obligation to Saint Brain Market?
And I think that's what the attorney's saying, we need to decide and put it in writing. Because we know we will never enter an agreement like that again, was, you know, Saint Brain Market. But until that obligation is met, they they do have it, but if they never do the project.
Have we heard anything recently about their intent, I mean, and their project was, it was the parking lot, it was tearing down the 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 old car wash, but it was. So expanding the building and so they've done a couple of those, but that's not enough to kick off the reimbursement obligation.
Sure, do you have some insight into?
Well, there's another, yeah, I'll do it.
Do you mind, yeah?
Sure, I was notified that. Apparently the Neil Sullivan, who still is the. Property owner and the owner of this agreement, reimbursement agreement, has said. He would be willing to file an amendment to take four oh two main out of that. However, we already know what kind of situation and complication we're having. Only them, not the hotel. And so they would consider an amendment to their agreement to eliminate four oh two.
The hotel there, the obligation of the U R A to pay an amendment to the hotel is specific to that problem.
Sure, yeah.
And like I say.
No, same brain needs to happen in.
And their sharing reflects seventy percent, thirty percent in the initial years, and so the U R A's thirty percent of the increment if the hotel kicks in. Is enough to satisfy the whole Saint Brain Market, so I don't see there's a real problem with the hotel.
I agree.
But you're right, if this opens, if Neil is. The beneficiary of that agreement is willing to carve out four two main, that I think that solves the problem.
Yeah, and Commissioner Brownie, to be clear, I I agree with what you just described, I I have serious legal concerns about prioritizing four oh two main without an amendment. To the Saint Rain Market agreement in particular. I think Moss Rock sort of stands on its own because it's just the increment that that project generates and then similarly for four oh two, but. It's great to hear that an amendment might be considered, but that's the only way that I think we wouldn't be potentially, you know, they could at least, they could raise or allege a breach of contract if we. Prioritize four oh two main without an amendment, yeah.
So so it's great that they're amenable to that, so I think.
But I think we would have to bring them simultaneously.
Yes, and that was my question, is are this is Mr. Sullivan ready to do that?
Verbally, you know, we haven't put a document in front of them yet. Again, we, you know, didn't want to do that without.
Well, and so I looking around the room, it seems like we're in agreement that that would be a good idea for staff to work with. Mr. Sullivan, I don't, if that's not the case, then. They shared. This is very important. Okay, so that was last on the on the list in the staff memo.
So just for my clarification, because we haven't issued any reimbursements yet.
Yeah.
If we have an agreement with Moss Rock regarding their own property and one with four oh two regarding their property. And Saint Brain Market. We can't tell when Laura is generated by which project. That's what I think that's what I'm trying to. We can't, we don't get a breakdown from the assessor saying. Four oh two generated this, so we're not going to apply that. We will have to, every time there's a tax statement, we'll have to bring it in, compare what it was the year before to this year. And take them out of that figure, because you have to remember, it's not just the these three properties. We are going to see hopefully a Laura revenue from Riverbend's remodeling and from. If someone buys one sixty East Main and, you know, we're going to see it from other places too. So I know that and Director I Stone, please speak up if you want, that she was concerned about how do we know? That it's not coming from four oh two when we don't get a break from.
Yeah, we're going to have to make those assumptions. And everybody's just going to have to be okay with the assumptions that are made. And I think that that is what's tricky with this urban renewal authority is that it is not going to be based on black and white information. It's going to be, well, this was their base and now this is their new. So this should be their increment. And they can have eighty percent of that and Saint Brain's not going to get any of that, but Saint Brain. And of course, this just assumes that everybody gets their projects done, but then Saint Brain can have part of Moss Rocks. Because that's the way the Moss Rock. Commissioner Browning, the Moss Rock agreement is actually written that the. Saint Brain comes off the top and then the seventy thirty split happens. So it's not that the twenty percent comes from the authorities, thirty percent, it's it's a little bit different. I will say that I I do think that it's going to be a bit of a administrative. It's just going to require a lot of documentation and hopes that. Everybody is is on board with with the assumptions made and and the way the calculations come in. And and I think that, go ahead.
Understanding that, you know, I I understand the complexity here and also I feel like everybody saying everybody's just going to have to be okay with this isn't a great legal strategy.
No, yeah, that's why my suggestion is to put language into these documents going forward that states this is exactly how we're going to do it. Who gets priority? Because my concern is, let's just say we have a large fire. Let's say all three agreements come in. And then we have a large fire somewhere else in the U R A, which then brings our increment for that area, that piece. Down, but it also brings the whole increment down. Now we cannot pay a hundred percent of what everybody was supposed to get with the three agreements. So who gets priority over being paid first? In the event that we have something like that happen.
And I will share that the agreements, as as drafted, the existing ones and the ones that we're looking at, they give full protection to the U R A in the sense of. If increment is not generated, you owe nothing, right? And they are also very deferential to, you know, what the county assessor determines, they can't kind of challenge it, they agree not to challenge. And then second, what the Laura determines, right? It is very deferential to. The Laura is going to do its best to come up with the calculation and this is what we are agreeing to live with. So you are right there, I mean, we have written in language to protect the U R A. From a property owner trying to claim that, you know, the calculations weren't weren't correct. Now, Director I Stone's suggestion to include the specific calculations, all the better, right? Because then you really know there's a meeting of the minds. Because I do think that there will be a moment in time where you're sort of digging out of your hole. And you could say that, you know, Moss Rock might be able to say, well, our increment is. A hundred thousand, but the U R A only has eighty thousand and you have kind of these two agreements hanging out there, so what do you do? You know, do you give them a hundred percent of their eighty thousand and no one else gets the rest? Or do you sort of split it between four oh two main and Moss Rock as you kind of dig out of this hole? So that's really the direction we'd love to hear from you all is, you know, with the existing agreements, kind of, do those get paid first? Or do you want to see kind of a fair allocation of, you know, if the increment isn't a hundred percent. It's eighty percent, how do we allocate that between two commitments? Or three?
Still, the same brain is, yeah, I wish they'd moved forward, I know.
I think it still even becomes an issue, even if Saint Brain moved forward or not, it would still be an issue between. Moss Rock and four oh two main. In the event that, you know, there was a disaster or something else happened.
I agree that getting having something in writing that that outlines at least the general principles. Such as. There's a proportionality based on something objective such as the agreed upon. The agreed upon. Anticipated increment that that the decision is made on. For example, with, you know, Moss Rock for eleven months, you know, I guess we don't want to get into details, but. You know, some proportionality on objective numbers that are agreed upon at the point of. Agreement of the contracts.
We should be able to do that because we're gonna have to redo the Moss Rock grammaticing layer. Finalized the four two main, so it should be addressable in both agreements.
And I believe what four oh two main is asking is, Kit, what they're saying is. If we complete our project first, we would like to be considered first. And if we're going to be approving this next month. And well, we'll probably have them both in front of you again. No, Moss Rock will be a just a year extension.
Well, one other suggestion.
Yeah, I apologize. I had a four to five meeting on my calendar and so I have to be somewhere in person since thirty.
No problem, I'll be in. Do you want us to work through Natalie or Dr.?
I sent you and um there an email.
We'll get you, we'll get you oriented in front of.
Sounds great.
Okay, thank you.
If if a project has a certificate of occupancy. It would be considered with others that have a certificate of occupancy. Those that don't have a certificate of occupancy couldn't have claim on that current year's. Increment increment.
The issue that that obviously presents though would be, would that throw a big enough wrinkle in the hotel's financing that it would jeopardize the. Their ability, that add an uncertainty to their investments. If, well, if four two main is gonna get done first in the hotel a couple of years later, is that gonna screw up their financing?
Well, they would, I mean, they they're not really eligible for it until they're. Operational, right?
Yeah, but we'll never get any different if they're financing difficult. And if you look at the relative benefits to not just the U R A but to the town in terms of tax replenishment, there's. Obviously a huge difference, so. Would you know, would doing that jeopardize the hotel's financing?
Yeah. Unless I misunderstood, then they were saying they were not good with. Any change in order.
That's what they were asking as well.
Correct.
And as now we negotiate this contract. There they have, you know, Moss Rock, if it's gonna be a year before they break ground and then if it's another year, you're gonna have to build. That is a year, couple of years of increment generation these guys would miss.
Is it trying to have something that is objective that you can, you can, you can measure, you know, when. The certificate of occupancy is issued on that day. And then if if the other project doesn't have that, then the the increment that occurs in between. Is, you know, would not have gone to the uh to the non operational uh project anyway.
This is a suggestion that that could be uh objective. Kind of suggest that.
I should say, it's related and I I feel like if it was kind of addressed in the right way, it was one of the questions that we had that hasn't been kind of answered yet. Um if it was, if there was a possibility of creating kind of an instrument or mechanism to catch up if there is a negative increment. So if those first couple of years, if the U R A is still in a negative balance. Is there a way to catch it up rather than it just being a regular eighty twenty? Is there some sort of kind of catch all that we can make it up later? And if that mechanism could be identified. And if it was something that you are, the U R A would want to agree to, if that existed, then the priority conversation. I think probably wouldn't be as big of a deal, like if. If there's a possibility of making it up in future years.
Isn't it virtually a certainty at this point unless some other calamity, fire or something happens? That when Riverbend's value hits the books, that we're back in, we're back funded. And they're they're fully completed and now and so I understand that may not be until January first twenty twenty seven, but.
Attorney Quander?
Uh I was gonna ask, answer Commissioner Drysted's kind of question and comment in in that. If a project is not eligible for tax increment until it is a completed project. Um so we really do not have an issue. I mean, if if four oh two main goes forward more quickly and they're generating increment. Um they can receive that increment. The issue really only happens is if. In it, and it's a very good thing, right? A good problem to have where all three projects or all two projects um do move forward. And then you have a a moment where you don't have a hundred percent of the increment that you should be paying out. So that's really the only instance where you kind of think about priority, um where, you know, all projects are complete. And the increment isn't quite out of the hole enough where you're able to give all projects a hundred percent of what they're, you know, they are owed, if you will. For reimbursement that year. Um and that's when you'd have to question the prioritization.
If that happened, because the hotel, as soon as it hits the books, there's no issue about negative increment anymore.
Unless there's a disaster.
It would, if we, yeah, it would, it would just be a potential disaster.
Is this something that needs to be decided tonight?
Well, we need to write it into their agreement to present to, into Moss Rock to present to. Well, not Moss Rock as much as these guys. At your next meeting.
My inclination would be to um, and this is, this is a tough question. This is definitely a tough question, but my inclination would be to um segment the increment according to. The the percentage of each project's contribution to the increment. So say, for example, and um executive director says, I mean, they. Maybe this isn't making sense even as a question, but if, let's say. Saint Brain contributes twenty percent to the increment. I'm just pulling these numbers out of that there. And four two main contributes forty percent to the increment. To the district, to the district and the ho- the hotel contributes the rest. Like i- is there a way to segment it like that?
Director Istone?
I'm shaking my head, yes, that calculation makes sense to me, um kind of a pro rata share. Attorney Quander, does that?
How do we know what that in that?
Well, I think you would do it, you would, you would calculate, um and this is where I think you would calculate from base. To current for each one. And then you could total those, you know, you could do it where you total those together and say, okay, this is a percent of this or this. Or you could total the total increment. Well, I don't think, even think you could do the total increment received. Because that's gonna also have contributions from other properties, but um. And you could just apply those percentages to the increment received, maybe um. Attorney Quander, I don't know if you have a better language suggestion or um. calculation method, you know, this is one of those reasons why uh that representative at the state was saying our. Our setup is difficult for calculation purposes. Because even if we didn't have any disasters, you know, we're we're making assumptions of base minus new. And that's exactly what's going to go into the increment account and that's not necessarily the case either. So um. You know, I think there's always gonna have to be assumptions made.
Plus, we don't have that in the current agreement with the market.
And they're willing to renegotiate their bringer, it sounds like.
Regarding four oh two main, so maybe, I mean, we can ask, we can ask. If we could get that clause into each of the agreements, I think that's workable. If not, as you said earlier, we have an agreement with Saint Brain, they have to get their first twenty.
Yeah, I think Saint Brains would be the easiest. I almost think you don't, you take care of Saint Brain first. And then apply the assumptions to the two larger areas because Saint Brain's gonna be off, if they move forward, they'll be off the books. Almost immediately. I think the difficulty could come from, you know, the two larger.
Saint Brain gets a hundred percent of the increment from their property.
Yes.
Does anybody have any other suggestions? Sophie?
Is that, Commissioner Drystone, is that the same intent you meant when you said proportionality?
Yes, yeah, it it's identifying um definable numbers. Objective numbers uh and 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 using that proportionality moving forward.
But also considering a certificate of occupancy instead of. Remembrancement of construction.
Yeah.
Well, we have completion of construction in these agreements already, like they are not eligible for tax increment until they have completion of construction. So I think we're actually okay there.
Okay, fair. Well, I guess we'll try to talk with Saint Brain Markets first. Meet with you guys, we'll get you a draft and see if we can bring forward those two agreements next month. And I guess the third, which is just the extension. Oh boy, we have three in November.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's a lot, okay. So is that it then for four oh two main?
We still have some outstanding stuff that we're supposed to discuss, so. But I don't think we've got that, um like on changes of the bankability underwriting.
What engine? Um, oh, that's in the contract. It doesn't need the authority?
I don't think so, just just the way the agreement's currently drafted, it's a very like um. Subject to available increment increment and someone presented that to the bank, just the way it's all loaded in there. Um they weren't willing to underwrite based on that. So we wanted some more bank friendly lender friendly language.
Well, if you would like to propose that in the in our next. Uh agreement that we look at.
Yeah, I think we're the town, so Attorney Quander may have. But we can do some more.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for your patience and your work on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, let's move on to the budget document.
Okay, this is just the delivery of the draft budget document um as required by state. We're gonna consider it for adoption at our next meeting. Um so just to summarize the document a little bit, uh no property tax revenue coming in. Um one of the new things that is in there is developer lure reimbursements and those are just those escrows that we're talking about. I did include a sixteen thousand dollar payment um. From Moss Rock as they have indicated that they are willing to pay the balance that they've already incurred. So I did have that in a in twenty twenty six, um but if it comes in this year, great. Um that just kind of takes care of some of those bills that the authority was um hanging on to and, you know. Um affecting the fund balance there, but um other than that, there's nothing new. Uh legal fees, charges for staff time and an ending fund balance of approximately uh thirty eight thousand.
Thank you. Any questions on the budget?
I'll try to keep them short.
Thank you.
Do we have an understanding from the assessor's office as to when the increment on Riverbend's improvements? Will actually result in revenues to U R A?
I believe um it may have happened in in Victoria's conversations with them. But it's similar to the questions on the Main Street properties. It will be corrected with the next tax roll. And added to.
So I gotta get, to make it simpler, will we see the incremental um taxes? From um Riverbend during twenty twenty six?
We will not.
We wish it'll be twenty twenty seven.
Yes, unless now, I'm gonna caveat this, these are based on preliminary assessments. Uh from the assessors, we do not receive the final until uh the end of November and. But they have not indicated when I questioned the zero again, uh that we would have any changes, so. It would be twenty twenty seven.
Mr. Tamborello, I'm trying to do about the difference between what was showing on the assessor's site as their um assess value versus. What was shown in their projection. He said something about the assessor's office for major projects being willing to adjust values. You know, mid project. I that that was what he said, but it didn't go in from the assessor's office. Is there any discussion about that about?
I received your email this morning and I plan to call the assessor herself and talk to her. I just put this pack, this meeting and board packet today, I didn't get to it today. And but I'm gonna ask because my understanding was when it's something. Like a fire where you really don't have the assets. It's different than when we have a building that's, it's the same building, same value, it just. You know, wait till January to do all those. So I think he's willing to do it for Tamborello because he has no.
Because it was.
There's no asset there.
Right.
Where when like on the three hundred block, I mean, the asset's still there, they're paying property tax. It's not appropriately allocated. He'll make those all at once. But I don't, I I'm gonna call, I'm gonna just talk to her directly.
Or related to the similar type question, for there's, there's five properties. Yes, most, maybe all on Main Street or anyway downtown properties that have been misclassified by the tax assessor's office for many years, some cases decades. They're in the process of fixing those.
Yeah.
By January first of twenty twenty six.
That's what they said.
And so will the twenty to twenty twenty six revenues from those fixes flow partly to the U R A?
Should.
They split between increment and base? Is that how they would do it? I mean.
Well, now that I say that, it may just go to the base value. Because there's not a building permit that shows there was an improvement.
Yeah, but of course, the the value has changed over the years as assessed values have grown. Which the increases in assessed values were attributed to increment.
Yeah, I don't know.
And so if 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 they had fixed these misclassifications years ago, you would have had more income.
Sure, that's true.
I I I don't know how they do that. I don't know what they do with errors and class, you know, that kind of.
Let's find out.
Changes, yeah, but which could float, so that could provide some cash flow to the U R A.
Anyone else have any questions?
At our last meeting, we asked if we could see whatever report or calculation we had gotten from the assessors. So that we could better understand how they calculate these increments. But we've been able to scare up that communication from them so that we can.
I do have it, yeah, I do have it. Um and I will send that out and I can actually send you. The, all the prior calculations as well and I'll include the newest preliminary calculations. My apologies, I had that on my list to do. Warning you now, it's complex. But I will send that out or I will ask Dolores to send that out to the, to all the commissioners.
Thank you.
I recognize that it's complicated, but it might take some of that subjectivity and some of the potential criticism we might receive for. Making assumptions or making judgments if we're able to match their methodology as much as possible.
Anyone else? All right, are there any future agenda items? Looks like we're gonna have a pretty big agenda in November. Nothing like ending the year with bang.
We'll try to get packet out sooner um for this meeting, it's a. For this meeting, it's a, some, it just is, when you're communicating with this. Number of people and people are traveling and they go and get back, so you get, you know, we, it, we do it as soon as we can. But we'd rather get you a accurate, you know, product than, than not, so.
Okay.
We can always, if need be, push the meeting back or, you know, if you want, would rather do that to have more time, we can have that as well, but. We will do our best to get this out. This was just a double time with board packets.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you so much, yeah. Um, then we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, online.